Hi there, how are you?
Good, and yourself?
Good.
Do we have Tori on the line? Okay. Great. Okay, we will go ahead and get started. We could stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for roll call, everybody is here and Tori is on the phone. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're to communications, open period for patron comments relating to board items. We do not have any relating to the board items tonight. So we'll move to the next item, which is standing committee reports.
I have not had a committee meeting.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. I listened to the state board of education meeting. They covered quite a bit about the new, the course and virtual program. They had a report from the task force on learning acceleration that's going to take a look at the impact of the interruption we've had in schools and what will be, what will go on this fall to help and deal with that. And the commissioner also did a report on the reentry and what they're considering, what they've done. And they really focused on being flexible, providing support, and putting an emphasis on communication. I listened in on the SSD PAC meeting on August 12th, and that was just really an overview of services and everything that's going on for parents from several school districts. And we had a call this afternoon where we had a town hall for Melville parents. And I want to tip my hat to Kim Lawson and all the area coordinators here, and also to Dr. Smith and to Chad for all their work to get everything set up here and to work with parents and try and answer their questions as best they can. Thanks.
I do not have anything.
Jean?
Just policy today, that's everything.
Okay. Yeah, we just went through a lot of policies in a short time.
Yeah, but we're able to move some forward, but we will have some for review soon.
Tori, do you have anything?
Nope.
I actually lied. I do have something.
You lied.
Sorry, Marshall. We had an insurance meeting. I didn't lie. But I didn't, my brain didn't go there. So we had an insurance meeting, went over sort of all the benefits that come along with all the extra problems with COVID. Are you going to talk about this tonight? But we're not, so. Oh, okay. But basically, we do not have to increase the rates or anything this year again for the, how many years in a row?
Since 2015.
Since 2015, so that's all good. And then, other than that, it was pretty much a upbeat meeting. Things are going well. Not a lot of complaints out of the committees. Committee is made up of retired educators that are insured through the district, current educators, administrators, and board members, and Marshall, and then lots of insurance specialty people that explain things to people. So the representatives of the retired, they bring, you know, their constituents' questions to the meetings, and then the insurance people answer those. So it was very informative.
That's great. It's great news too about rates staying the same. Okay, thanks. Our next item is action items by consent. We have quite a few in this. Is there any that anybody wants to pull out, or does somebody want to make a motion to approve those?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. It's a number six, governance, starting with a summer project update. Is that right?
Going to go through our summer projects, I kind of bite your own chills, kind of go project by project. Information. This is Hegement Elementary. We did a total HVAC project there, updating all the HVAC controls. Got VAB boxes in all the classrooms, so it's a total upgrade we had before. And obviously more efficient than the old one. The old one was the original to the building, 1994, so we got our money's worth in this one. To the point where it was a lot of maintenance. Save us some money, also be less maintenance. Next slide please. Tennis courts, we had a lot of cracks and damage to the tennis courts from, pretty much from the original installation. We had it repaired done a couple of years after we called it. But it was time, it was time for the, to get the cracks, also the paint was at the time where it needed to be repainted. So we got a company on board, and they, contractor, and they kind of fixed all the cracks, did all the repairs, and they put the fabric down and repainted it, and they finished. There was some minor touch-ups this morning. They did turn it over to us today, but it is open to public. And then I talked to Tim and Becky, and the students will, tennis team will be, are using it on Monday. Turned out good, did a great job. Kind of looks like they're brand new again, so hopefully we can get about 10 to 12 years out of it. At our middle, we did a roof project. This is the entire roof. This was a overlay, modified sheen, rolled sheen. The old roof was just, had a lot of wear from the, a lot of missing grandules. So we, it was due, usually we get about 20 years, this one we got about 17, so it was due for a new roof. So we ended up doing the entire roof. They got the front canopy done a few weeks, a few days ago, so they got some sheet metal work to do down here. Slide please. Berkeley, we did some waterproofing on aggregates, is a, kind of like an aggregate on a concrete driveway. So it needs to be sealed every so often. So we had the company come in and power wash all the aggregate, then they resealed it with two coats. Then also they took out all the old caulk, reinstalled new caulk. Pretty painless project, and it went good. So I think we're good again for about, they're saying that we should do it about every 12 to 15 years. Be good for a while. Belleville High, the roof, did about over 800 squares here. The library, and then around the quad area. This was just on our roof schedule. Again, it is a modified rolled roof. They are about 90% done. They still got a section in the very back of the building by the warehouse, kitchen warehouse. They left some sheet metal to do as well. So they're about two weeks out. Both roof projects, we had a lot of rain delays. Had about, I think it was our fifth wettest July, so I think they're doing pretty good for all the rain we've had. August hasn't been much better, but now we got some good weather, hopefully they can wrap these projects up. Oakville Senior, we had that retaining wall, which is to the south of the stadium bleachers. This was, the wall failed on us, I believe it was due to, the wall was not built correctly. Also the asphalt failed, which got water to push underneath it, push all over. So we got a company on board, and they did it right this time. Then we're gonna, they got the wall up a couple of days ago. Got asphalt company coming in Tuesday to, for about six feet. About 102 foot of asphalt. And we're gonna also, to protect it, we're gonna put a curb up, keep the water, because the water comes off of that hillside, and that rushes over the hillside. Curb will deflect the water, and hopefully we get many more years out of that wall. Asphalt seal and stripe, did about 12 properties. This is Mosaic. We did some remove and replace as well over in Belleville, Oakville Middle, and Porter. They are almost done. They have two, Hegement and Berkeley, two striped it. They're all sealed, and then JB, we're also going to do JB property. And that will be started tomorrow about 3 o'clock. They will seal it and stripe it on Sunday. After, then Monday, Tuesday, they're gonna write Hegement and Berkeley. So that project should be 100% by Tuesday. Things going good on that end? Is that it? Questions?
I have a question, but it's not about all of the updates. They look fantastic. I was just wondering if you looked at the airflow in the buildings as it relates to COVID? I'm sure you've heard of, you know, sick buildings or unhealthy buildings.
Chad and I have been discussing that and kind of, and there is a, kind of looking into it.
All right, good. All right. Thanks for the update. Okay, next one is considering policy revisions, which there is one.
I think it looks great, but it has the change in it that we were, or that at least I brought up, that I was concerned about with the written letter. If it was asked for by the legal guardian, and so that was the only line that I had a problem with. And they rewrote it a little bit more, I think, and I think it addresses everything that we wanted addressed.
Good.
Everybody good?
I'll make a motion to approve policy IKC as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I gotta wait for Tori. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next one is considering placing bond issue on the November 2020 ballot.
Dr. DeKemper and I are going to tag team a little bit on this one. We'll start us off, and he'll talk about some stuff, and then. So again, background, things that we just talked before. Done a number of surveys around our facilities, and the top four things that continue to come up are safety parking, restrooms, and our HVAC system. We look back at our history of investment in facilities. It's been a pretty cyclical notion of investing in the facilities from the early 50s, which is about as back, as far back as we have data, through the early 90s with the last bond issue in 2002. The district had tried a few more times to pass bond issues in the late 90s, but were unsuccessful. So then went for a lease, which requires a lower voter threshold in November of 2000. So if you look at how we fund the things that Mike Gigg just talked about, a lot of that's through Prop R, which was approved in November of 15, and that provides us about $7.5 million, which translates to just under a dollar a square foot in terms of what we have for ongoing maintenance. Then, just a few months later, voters approved Prop A, which was a tax transfer of four cents, but that is specific to just roofs and HVAC. So for some of these roof projects and HVAC projects, we kind of bank some of that Prop A money over a couple of years so that we can do a bigger project. The small projects, followed by some big projects, kind of as we move along in that regard. And some projects, we pay a little bit out of Prop A and a little bit of Prop R if they're roofing. And Prop A in particular has a sunset, so 25, 26 school year will be the last year for that levy. And then we've got our 410 fund, which over time has just become not very much money and then through it to invest in facilities. So these years and years of really disinvestment in our facilities has created this massive backlog of projects. Thankfully, with Prop R and Prop A, we're able to stay steady, but we're just not catching up. We're not getting further behind. So we've talked for a number of years about this opportunity that lies ahead because we're, we'll be paying off this lease from 2000. We'll have, excuse me, opportunity to make another levy transfer. So that's coming up. So we've had this facility steering committee that's been working since January of 2019. First off, we surveyed parents at each building, as well as employees, high schools kids, really asking for projects in six areas of parking, restroom, safety and security, general instructional space, general upgrades, and just kind of a catch-all other. All of that list would go to our facility steering committee. The facility steering committee would be at the schools, the principals would do a presentation of the data that had been collected. And then we went through a prioritization process with the committee, and we would get it down to two groups that would prioritize projects within that building. Then we would take that information, we would turn that around in a survey to the members of the committee, and then ask them to do a Likert prioritization of each item. And that gave us a numerical representation of what are the most important projects at that building. And the next time we meet, we would provide that, those survey results to the group. And pretty much at every building, the number one priority was improving the safety and security on the front entrances to the buildings. Other big projects or main priorities would really fall in line with what we were seeing in the surveys, well, of parking, restrooms. So as we identified all of those, we came, came up with $237 million in projects. Now, there was some duplication in that, but if you just look at the 237 million as a number, it would take 80 cents to fund all of that. And then we asked the group to further prioritize, and in early June, they prioritized down to $40 million in priority projects. We've talked earlier about how we took that piece of data, compared that to our five-year plans around Prop R and Prop A and the 410 fund, to see what we could do there. And what we have finally pulled out is a $35 million bond issue, the fund project, which would take about 12 cents. Before, we had said, you know, somewhere between 11 to 15. So if we look at that $35 million, the bulk of that would be spent in safety expenses, about $3 million for the roof, a little over $7 million in HVAC. But as was mentioned earlier, I mean, we're almost to the point now with COVID that HVAC has become a safety issue, right? So we, we will be increasing the amount of outside air next week that will be pumping into the buildings as more and more are earned. We've also got a significant investment in parking, a lot of restroom upgrades, a lot of upgrades to be compliant with ADA. We've got some other projects, really the bulk of that is in two pieces. One is a new bus garage. The other is a classroom addition at Beerbomb to delay the need to redistrict the candidates. And then we've also got a little bit in there for certain agents. And in addition to that $35 million, we've got about $5.5 million from Prop R, Prop A, and the 410 funds over the next few years. That will address some of the projects that were identified. Probably going to end up being more than that $5.5 million, but we definitely are at $5.5 million other projects that we will. The recommendation overall is 12 cents to fund a $35 million bond issue. So Dr. DeKemper is going to talk about what we would be doing in that building.
So the following priorities were identified by each, easily elementary, having a security or restroom. There'd be an improvement to outdoor lighting at restaurants, library, or parking, widening over road. At Bernard, create a security entrance or lighting. At Beerbomb, significant changes. Security entrance. Classroom addition, multiple classroom additions. Great. There'd be ADA access. Classrooms, our kindergarten classrooms, office. ADA compliant restrooms, restroom. Improvement to outdoor lighting, additional parking, and much-needed perimeter fencing, as that has emerged. Safety concern. Blades Elementary would receive a security entry and outdoor lighting. Berkeley Middle School have a security entry, have restroom upgrades to make them ADA compliant. We would add restrooms, there would be improved outdoor lighting, there would be ADA accessibility to the track for long-standing quest, and there would be roof work. For CO, for JB, for Whittle, and for Transportation, city prioritized the construction of a 15,000-square-foot transportation building. At Porter Elementary, there would be a security entrance, outdoor lighting, AC. At Hegement, security entrance, ADA access to playground, and a second site, print and exit, traffic flow. John Kerry would receive a security entrance and HVAC work. Belleville High School would receive an improved security entrance. There would be ADA compliance for students anticipating band, stadium restrooms, parking improvements, baseball, softball field, safety upgrades, HVAC work. Mosaic Elementary have a new security entrance, elevator, which would allow students to access floors at Mosaic Elementary. Apparently, that's a challenge. At Oakville Elementary, there would be a security entrance, ADA upgrades to the restroom, and expanded parking, the new property of Elementary. Oakville High School have a security entrance, parking improvements, stadium toilet upgrades, A upgrades, restroom updates, roof work. Like Melville High School, receive baseball, softball field, safety upgrades. Oakville Middle School have a new security entrance, outdoor lighting. Point would have a new security entrance, and one of the exit ramps for students, I'm sorry, one of the exits, exterior exits would have ADA accessibility if you have. Rogers Elementary have a security entrance. There'd be significant playground and parking, safety upgrades, HVAC work. Troutline would have a security entrance, outdoor lighting, significant improvement to parking and drive, natural ramp around the school. Create a much safer driving environment for families and businesses. Washington would have a security entrance, outdoor lighting upgrades. Owen would receive a security entrance, upgrades, outdoor lighting, work. Dr. Gaines.
You can see it's a lot of work there, but it doesn't come close to addressing all the pieces that were on. Only the highest priority items at each building. So decisions that we've talked about before, the options that lay before the board, or whether to put it on the November ballot, the April ballot, some other point in the future, or to just nothing. Now, we've talked before across the county since 2001, so our last significant investment in facilities was in 2000. What everybody else has been doing, while we've been doing, nothing of a significant nature to our facilities. See that in many instances, it's a cyclical nature and a cyclical investment. In terms of dollar amounts, those range from small districts investing $20 to $25 million in their facilities to some of the larger districts at nearly half a billion. Districts of our size, so our floor is just a little bit bigger than us, about $78 million over that time period. Limburg, actually not that much different from us in that $200 million over that time period. Another way to look at it is like this, Melville is that space where we have no bar. Everybody else has invested, and how many times they've made those investments also. We've also taken a look at how much debt per student we have compared to other districts. So we have incomplete data for Riverview. So, we have incomplete data for Riverview, but we know based on ASVR data that of us that we have the least amount of debt per student in the county. We also know that our tax rate is at the low end of the county, only district would do being below us. If you look at the 12 large districts in the county in terms of assessed value per student, we're kind of in the middle of those 12, but with tax rate, debt, and amount of bonds that we've issued, we're all at the bottom. So, as I've kind of said before, if we were keeping score in a competition, that if it's us versus the county, the county is outpacing us about 2.3 billion to zero in terms of investments in facilities over the last roughly 20 years. So, our current reality is this 45 cents that's paying this lease that we've had since 2000. It was actually 49 cents when it was approved by voters. Based on changes in assessed value and payments, it went as high as 53 or 54 cents. Currently is at 45. See that, look at the data around the county, back of the bus, relative to facility investments and operational investments. So, this concept that we've been talking about for a long time is this notion of moving this 45 cents to have a significant investment in facilities, which would likely be a bond. In this case, we're recommending 12 cents, $35 million. Leave 33 cents to be used for operations. If we go back to last fall and into the early winter, really, we would have anticipated that that would have been a little bit more balanced, that we probably would have been asking for, or recommending a larger bond issue. But with the budgetary impacts of COVID-19 this past spring, transportation withholds, reduction in sales tax revenue, and withholds on the basic formula as well as withholds in the basic formula this year, we've kind of pared everything back and have a larger investment on the operations side. So, really, taking that 45 cents that we've been using and just moving that to operations and a bond. The bond, that part will take a vote of the people. So, if we do nothing, or it doesn't pass, the same thing happens, and that is the full 45 cents go into operations, then we would have some authority of where we could replace that. But the ballot language, which is kind of dictated in statute, technically, because our debt service levy is currently zero, actually have to ask for an increase in the debt service levy. But from a practical standpoint, it's just a transfer from one bucket to another. So, the Facility Steering Committee has finalized their recommendations. Now, it's up to the board to decide when and what to do, and then up to the community. So, with that, Dad's been eating, sleeping, and breathing this since November of 2019 as well. We'll attempt to answer any questions when I have.
I just have one comment. Who writes the language for the ballot?
In statute. So, the statute basically has boilerplate language of shall blank borrow money in amount of blank for the purpose of blank.
And that can't be deviated from?
No. This was written by a bond attorney.
Because we're burying the headline that there's no tax increase.
That's in the last sentence.
Yeah, exactly. Most people won't get that far. Whereas, if we could open with it, I think we'd do okay.
Which means we're going to have to explain it clearly and directly when we start talking about it.
What's that?
Oh, we'll start, if this does move forward, we're going to have to make sure we communicate that directly and efficiently, that it's a zero tax increase.
Right, that's what I was saying.
But yes, the boil, the, this varies it at the bottom.
Well, I guess the question to ask is, from a communication point of view, given the fact there's going to be so many absentee votes and mail-in votes this year that will probably get executed early to mid-October, let's say for the sake of argument, what would be the strategy to go out and explain this to everyone as no tax, where the values are, the emphasis on safety, and just maintenance of buildings? I think that's, to me, that's the key thing.
From the district perspective, we can only provide information, and we're ready to start pushing out information tomorrow.
Am I the only one that has a concern about November as far as, you know, being in the pandemic, and kids aren't actually physically in the physical buildings, and it's just, to me, it doesn't seem like November is the time, is the right time.
You're certainly not the only one. I mean, it's an opportunity because of voter turnout.
Right.
But it's not from a public standpoint the best time to do it, because obviously, people are going to ask the question, why are you going to spend this money even though it doesn't cost a taxpayer any difference? Why are you going to spend this money when my kids aren't even there to take benefit of it? But it also has to be understood that if we start now, if I remember correctly, don't we float the bonds? We wouldn't be doing it, work till probably toward the end of the school year, correct?
If we win in November and were successful, think about some of the projects that Chad went through. We've already bid some of those projects. So, baseball, softball, we could rebid, and it's possible we could get into some of those relatively quickly at the early summer. Baseball would wrap up. So, some of them we could get on relatively quickly if November, but we would still be able to do a number of things beginning in summer of 2021. If we were to wait until April, then we would, I mean, we might start some projects in the fall of 21, but the bulk of it first probably, see, visual work, I wouldn't start until summer of 2022.
With all the work that's attempted for security entrances and the like, it's going to be stuff that obviously has to be done in the summer.
Some of it, a lot of it can be done over the course of the summer, but some of these projects will have to be over the course of the school year, especially Beerbomb. There's so much work there. But, you know, when you look at all of the work, it's not all going to happen in one summer. Going to have to let it in bid packages, so some of the work's going to be ongoing. We might sell all the bonds at one time. We might, more than one bond sale, kind of depending. You know, one of the things that we've talked about from a transparency standpoint is just maintaining a spreadsheet of, we sold $35 million in bonds, we paid these bills. We've also been able to invest this money and draw this interest on those investments. Right now, it's not going to be much. That allows us to do more work, too.
But from a scope of work, this is probably a four, five-year project to get everything done?
I don't think it would be a five, but I think it would be a four.
So, with another approval, it's some of the work to get done towards the end of the 2020 school year, April, May, and the summer, and then we continue on probably 24, 25. And then if we did, it was, if April was shifted, it would be better.
It would shift everything by six, at least six, maybe as much as 10, because of the way the construction cycle works. One of the things that happens with the way that commercial construction kind of happens is a lot of that work is done in the summer. So, in order to get actually companies to be ready to do the work in the summer, you know, a lot of the stuff that we bid is in January, February. So, it locks them in, they've got enough lead time to order all the stuff that they're going to need, and, you know, that's been a challenge this year especially, is getting materials to be worked. Hopefully, that will decide moving into the future.
But that's certainly not an issue.
This year. The other thing that we've experienced is the Beerbomb piece of adding classrooms. If we had added classrooms four years ago, we'd just add classrooms and we're done. Well, the building codes have changed. Now, because we're adding classroom space that holds over 50 kids, we also have to build a storm shelter. So, you know, if you look at the orig, all of the massive lists that the Facility Steering Committee put together, you know, we had an auditorium for Oakville High School on that. Well, that's an auditorium that's going to hold like 400 people or more. Then we have to build a storm shelter, too, or we have to, that auditorium has to be a storm shelter level code. So, because we've waited as long as we have, the cost of doing all this work has gone up. So, at Beerbomb, based on the Facility Steering Committee's choice, it drove the cost of those classrooms up by a million and a half dollars. So, what else is going to change? What else is going to happen with construction price? I've been building the fence at my house, and the board, the posts and the boards, the posts that I was buying in March and in December are now 50% higher than they were then, and the boards are 100% higher than they were. So, costs are going to go up a lot.
But if we wait on it to April, we obviously lose the majority of the stuff we're doing pretty much in a second.
We lose a lot of work.
And do we not think that, and I agree with you, things have increased in price exponentially, but as the pandemic ends, things are going to, things are going to get back to normal, and then hopefully, the price of things will come back down as manufacturing is able to be increased. You know, there's also, and I don't disagree with you, Lisa, at all whatsoever, but there is also, besides the, what I, the point I just made about things, the prices of things actually coming down, the economy, you know? We get this work going, we're boosting the economy, we're putting people to work to do these things, you know? That's a, that's a win on, for the district and for our community, in my opinion, to put people back to work as soon as we can get them back to work.
Absolutely, and I don't disagree that it's not a good idea. I just wonder is that the timing is going to cause a PR issue that might, you know, who just wait a little bit, we might actually be more discussed.
I agree with what Lisa's saying. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Just, we're asking so much of our families right now that they've never dealt with before, and we have so many unknowns, and we need their support. And I just wonder if now is the right time to be asking for additional help from them, despite the fact that it's not an increase of any kind, we still need their support to, to get this done, and I just can't imagine that the, the timing works out for us, unfortunately. It's as important as it is.
Yeah, and I also think that, my mom lives in, in one of the nursing facilities here in the district, and, you know, the big talk is, before our meeting to decide that we are going to go virtual, what's the decision going to be? And I said, well, what do all your friends think? And she said, well, they all think we need to go back to school. And I said, right, except for, you know, and then I went down the list of reasons that it could be a catastrophe if we all, and she's like, never thought of any of that. I said, right, spread the word, because, so, you know, you also have your older generation that really doesn't see past all the problems, they just see kids not in school. And so, I, I think that there would be a little bit of a bone of contention with our older generation voters, too. And as we know, they're the heaviest turnout at the polls.
55 and up make up two-thirds of the voters.
Right.
The actual people who vote.
Well, I mean, actually, go to the polls is a good question, because I'm sure a lot of them are going to be doing it actually to your mail.
Yeah, that's another point that I had thought about before, Larry. It's the timing to get the message out and people to buy into it is that much shorter.
Those ballots will begin on September 22nd. The first absentee ballot can go on.
But there's a couple of the things to consider, too, just the math. In November, I believe it's a four-seventh vote. In April, it's two-thirds.
It'll still be four-sevenths.
Is it in that one? So, it has to go past that, okay.
It will be four-sevenths. And understand everything everybody's saying. I've also heard for the five years that I've been here, that we need to work on parking. We need to, we keep hearing, we need to do all this work, we need to do all this work, we need to do all this work. Be doing some of that next summer, potentially.
I think the thing that makes it difficult for me is it's hard to make an educated decision without a survey, because it's too easy to get into a group think type of mentality where we think we know how people will go, and part of that's, we all live in this world where we pay attention to it all. We know it's no tax increase. People that have been working on this for a year have a lot invested in it, there's a lot of sunk costs that are there, a lot of reasons to move forward with it, and without that neutral, third-party view of our community and what they're thinking, I think it makes it really hard to go into this situation. And I'm not sure about the rest of you, but the people that I, I have asked have largely come back immediately, even with the words "no increase" in it, with "no." Not if you want it to pass, was what one of them said, actually, two of them. That's, I think we have an uphill road at this point personally, but it's still hard to tell without that neutral, third-party being able to give us some numbers like what we had with Prop R. That was one where we could really look at it and see where we were at and what the community support level was.
The only way we get time to do a survey is to have this thing going forward and make the survey and find out if it was a good decision, which is not always the best way to do it, but it's all we've got to work with for November's shot, I think.
If we go with November, we don't have a survey.
The other side of that is from a statistic, I guess from a numbers point of view again, things are so convoluted now, I'm not sure what surveys are going to tell us. Now, and I understand the math of it, I just think everything is so topsy-turvy, I'm not sure if we wait till April and get numbers, it's going to look a whole lot different than it looks now. So, that, that's not the deterrent. The thing I keep thinking about is how do we reach the one-time voters? The people who'll come out in November that are going to start at the top of the ballot, and this is going to be at the bottom. That's normally the way they, they work the offices and that. So, again, it puts premium on, whatever we do in terms of communication strategy, we would have to turn out just about every family in the district and everybody they know, and that would probably work. We also know that there are people more, more supportive of education that come out and vote in November. Now, that may be upset this year, too, but traditionally, bond issues do better in November than they do in April. That, that's the numbers, that's true.
And this one, it being a presidential election, is obviously, I can accept more people coming out to vote, which may or may not be the way.
But, and the bad side of that is, there, a lot of them are going to be voting a month, almost a month earlier than the November date, so it really truncates.
When you're trying to get information out of essentially less than a month, when it's four or 18 days.
Yeah, it truncates how well you can message.
People that watch Prop R know how much communication occurred for that.
People that watch Prop R know how much communication occurred for that. It was a ton that happened outside of the school district because as Dr. Gaines said, there's a limited amount of information that the school district can give out there.
But we, we do have some, what I'll call intellectual capital and trust we've built up for Prop R. And a lot of this, I think this, this activity is gonna draw upon that goodwill.
I still think that we have a lot of people, um, that, that way more Americans are taking on all the support of that stuff right now. People that are probably, people that lost their job. People that are trying to do more of a salary or maybe a lot of kids because everything's bad, progress is bad. So I, I just don't think it's the right time.
As I say, it's a kind of financial thoughts that I'm directly, but it's indirect financial thoughts that they're doing because of what's going on in general perception of that. So again, a prickly question, right, before.
I would say that the perception of, of, of how the children, the primary, the
So depending on who you ask, some people are starting to say, hey, wait a minute, my kids aren't at school, I want my money back. Which is of course a ridiculous argument. But that's a perception that's gonna make this harder necessarily to push forward because they assume that, okay, it's a bond issue, it's gonna cost them something and it takes a long drawn-out conversation to make them understand it doesn't cost them anything.
But I mean, some people are gonna turn it off.
And they're just gonna maybe turn it off right now.
There's a lot of people right now who are spending more money on childcare and maybe even having difficulty finding that or with pods or those different things. Everyone's trying to find ways to deal with this. I just wonder if it comes off a little tone deaf to those issues that people are having if we push this right now, kind of a where's our focus at as we go forward? And it's, I think as time goes on and people figure out this new normal and hopefully as we get to the point where kids come back. Because there's the other thing, I mean, you're right, when we look at the numbers from past elections, presidential years, presidential elections tend to be good, but kids are also in school.
The parameters are good.
Yeah, kids are also in school and it's Feel like this one would be an outlier.
The other, the other thing to consider, I guess, is let's say for the sake of argument, we're still in a virtual world in April. What changes?
I think the big thing that changes is timing because there's more time to get the grassroots organization together, to get the word out, to really make sure that people fully understand this and that it's not going to last forever and that this is an investment in the future. When I look at this, and I think probably most of us do, because the committee did a very good job on this and it's been pared down to higher priority things, we could say this is a necessity legitimately.
It's been requested. This is stuff that they wanna do, especially with many of the things that have been requested repeatedly and offered. Thought exchanges and other communications from the community, they want safety and they want obviously other things that were prioritized. Because as much as we love to put that two-hundred-and-thirty-seven billion dollar pile on the books and say, did I go? It's obviously been pared down to the necessities. So if we, if we don't do anything, we look at it again for April. But then if we take a shot in November, if it fails, people are gonna have that negative perception of, well, you shot once, why would I try it a second time? So either you try it in April with the time to get the people behind it and get the, the public view of how it would go in April. Or if you take a shot in November and give a chance on it and April becomes even harder necessarily to guess that not because of what's going to happen between now and April, but the fact that you made a shot and it failed.
So when we did the last two, we were able to build strong community support. It wasn't just the district or even just the Prop R committee. I mean, there was a whole community that came up with that and we see that still today because since that point, the district has done what it promised to do. So there is all of this goodwill. There's a bit of me that thinks if we try to push this right now at this time, we'll lose some of that, first of all. And secondly, that, uh, doing it this quickly, the communication side of it will be low. We won't have the same level of support. And it seems to me there's a little bit of a wasted opportunity there too. As far as, people should be excited about this when they have time to take a look at it and see all of these improvements and that all of this is going to be done at no increase, no cost increase, no tax increase. Actually, it's gonna be a lower tax rate than what it used to be. So there's all of these benefits, but does that message get across in the next four to six weeks with everything else that's going on and everything else people are dealing with? Or does it make more sense with April where there's that time to build that coalition, that cooperation with the community? That's a question I have.
The other thing to consider too, to put this, if it's on the ballot in April, then it becomes a school board referendum at the same time.
Yes.
I'm not, that's not a negative comment. That's just, having gone through that a couple of times, it, it will be a referendum and the vote on that will be reflected in who's elected to the board. That's happened before.
And that could be a positive or a negative.
It could be a very strong positive.
It could be a very strong positive in the right circumstances.
Well, what happened between now and April? There's a lot that can happen between now and April.
There's a lot that can happen between now and tomorrow, the way things are going.
So a couple of things, um, I think if we took a survey in, uh, a month, six weeks, eight weeks, I think the survey is going to be skewed even, you know, even because of COVID frankly, because of the whole reason we don't wanna put it on the ballot. Maybe we're fearful that people are just tunnel vision. I mean, people that want their kids in school are angry. People that, um, you know, we've just got a lot of emotion, emotional reactive going on here. You know, it's not, it's, it, people are confusing their hearts with their heads and their kids with their lives. And I mean, it, and, and like I said, when we made the decision, it's a very, very difficult situation that nobody wants to be in. Um, but I think people's common sense is not winning here. I think the, I think their emotions are much higher. And so I think no matter when you did a survey, we're still gonna get a skewed result there. Um, I don't disagree that surveys are critical when you go to put something on the ballot. Um, the other thought I had just went away, speaking of brains, no. Um, so if somebody else has something, let me think about what else I was gonna say.
You take a bit, just interrupt me, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll write it down.
I just wanted to say that, um, I'm afraid that, uh, I, I wanted this to go on the ballot immediately. Um, however, I don't know that I could have, I, I just think it's a DOA with that wording. And I, and I just, there's got to be a way to get around that. Um, I mean, there's, I don't know what it is, I don't know, but you know, there's just got to be a way, this. Well, I agree. I agree with that. Because like I said, they're gonna have to know all about it before they go to the ballot box, okay? Because if they just walk in having never heard of it until that day, um, this is gonna be a no.
So a little, um, are you able to share with us the communication plan from the district at this point? Um, how prepared, I know you said that we're prepared to go out tomorrow. Um, I don't know how much you wanna talk about that or you don't.
We've got announcements ready to go out tomorrow. We've got stuff on the website tomorrow. The thing that we don't have tomorrow are the finalized conceptual drawings of every school. That will take a couple of weeks. Yeah. You guys have seen some of those. Uh, at some schools, those are, I, I would say kind of convincing of, you know, you've repeatedly asked for parking and this other work at your school, this is what we're gonna do. So I think that is hard to say no to. I also think sometimes that we underestimate the number of grandparents, aunts and uncles who are picking up kids every day and who experience, uh, parking challenges, traffic challenges at a number of our buildings. I mean, admittedly, a lot of the work that we're talking about, not sexy work. Right? It's not flashy or anything. I mean, it's fairly air bonus, right? We're trying to just do the absolute minimum of what our parents and teachers have told us that needs to be done and what our, what this committee has prioritized. And, you know, going back to what I said earlier, if you go back to, you know, even October when we were kind of talking about this with LJ Hart, they were showing numbers. I mean, we were in the fifty-plus million range and we pared back, I mean, we've not gotten anywhere close to that really. Uh, just continued to pare it back. We don't really, I mean, we can get rid of some outdoor lighting, uh, but that's about it at this point. And no, that's just not a lot of money there.
Without the lighting, obviously, it's maybe up there.
Right.
Takes care of one, it removes one of the things that people back for repeatedly.
I, I don't think anybody disputes that we definitely need. I mean, that's, that's a given. We do need it, particularly after the years of neglect and not doing anything to keep it up. That, that's a given. So, um, you know, I think that if, um,
The, oh, sorry, are you done? You told me, you told me to interrupt, if I remember.
I know. Go for it.
No, go for it. So, you know, another way to look at it, as Dr. Gaines said in his presentation, is, you know, will a few of these things actually enable us to get back in the buildings quicker? The HVAC, um, making, what, the question you brought up to Mike, you know, will this help us have a clean, what's it called, the clean building?
Clean building, yeah.
Um, so, you know, I think that that could be a selling point right now. Hey, you know, we, we wanna make sure the air is, that we are, we have your children in a clean building. Also with the safety entrances, um, that's crucial. I mean, do we wanna wait for something terrible to happen? Or do we wanna address that sooner rather than later? Um, and then that also could envelope right into these, you know, we have to have screening at every building as long as COVID is around, right? I mean, temperatures need to be taken, questionnaires need to be answered before people enter buildings. So as it is now, how would, I mean, if you walk into the typical elementary school, you have to walk through the hall before you get to a person. So how is that screening going to happen without setting up shop? And, and I understand, I mean, this is not, these things are not going to be built next month, but they are all things to consider. God forbid if we have this pandemic for the next two years.
Our new one.
Huh?
Our new one.
Yeah. You know, so I mean, there are some strong talking points. Um, I, we won't be able to have our rallies, we won't be able to canvas, I assume, because, or what? Did you have any thoughts about that or?
I think only informational stuff.
Okay. But I mean, if, if we had a committee that we're going to, an outside committee, I guess with COVID, we can't really knock on, have them knock on doors or whatever, so.
Well, I think that your conference of the pledge there is if you can, you can be, you can be, you can be, you can be without a lot of you can be scared on those, no doubt.
Because of what's being done now with Prop A, it basically just makes it, well, we got, it's doing the necessary break fix stuff to keep it going, correct?
For the most part, we spend all of our, anyway, we got, we have some capital, money, some of that, some of that's kept for emergencies, but you look at the size of much of, many of the HVAC projects, right? I mean, Pagano was close to two million, Berkeley was close to three million. We're talking about, we got a couple hundred thousand. So, uh, it's just not gonna go far in, in terms of being able to significantly address buildings. We did, we've talked with the architects and one of the things that they brought up is the ability to put potentially an ionizer on our, that's a sixty-five cents per square foot piece. So, you know, that's gonna be roughly in the neighborhood of one million. So that's not something we do. Now, that's probably the most immediate thing that we could do, but we don't have, have million threes just throw at it.
It's not about the heat and the, I don't know if I'm able to speak in this for us or some of our other ways about, you know, fresh air component and how we get through, uh, hit by type of, you know, that it's one, that fresh air everything for that, oh, one, which I don't see anything that much. But I don't have any details on that, so.
Really, I mean, if you think about building strategy over time, you know, you go back and think about Whittle and the way that Mosaic was built, the way Central Office is built, windows are kind of loose, right? I mean, just jokes, rain comes in my window when it rains, right? So, so just a lot of fresh air comes in. But over time, you know, especially you get into late nineties and early two thousands, it's like, we gotta build everything tight for energy efficiency, right? So everything started being a lot tighter and, you know, no indoor air, we gotta, you know, real good seals around everything. And what we did then was make it harder to turn over the air. So then it's like, okay, we have to adjust the HVAC system to now pump in more outside air. So it's been this interesting evolution of how we build and what we think about fresh air. I mean, we got buildings where you can't open the windows, right? So, you know, get a rock, I guess, and put a cardboard up there or, or something. But, you know, it, it's interesting how building strategies and building codes have changed over time. And now we're faced with this instance of, oh, we need to be bringing in all of this fresh air. People are like, well, we can go outside. Well, that's all nice and good, but I don't know about you guys, but a lot of kids I know, they're kind of spoiled the AC. And so are the adults, right? Who wants to go out and sit outside and learn when it's, you know, heat index of a hundred and two?
That's how I grew up.
But, I mean, that's not comfortable, right?
Works forty-five degrees outside.
They're not used to that. So you really just only kind of have this narrow window where people actually want to be outside. So it's, it's certainly a challenge. Now, I will say that, and my team, we have talked about this a number of times. And we can make a fairly good rationalization of why we should ask in November. And we can make a fairly good rationalization of asking in April. Our recommendation is November for a myriad of reasons. But as I mentioned in a couple of slides, it's really the board's decision at this point. And it sounds like you're not comfortable with going in November. So at, at this point, I, I would say, don't make any sort of motion, don't, don't do anything. Call this a conversation. Um, but it definitely, without accident, definitely won't be on, uh, the November, um, ballot. I'll sit down with that.
I have one more thing to say, um, believe it or not. Um, we do have, and as far as getting information out to the public, and I said this in one of our Zoom meetings, um, the public has a very short attention span. So we do have time to get it out, in my opinion, especially because we have a, an awesome public relations department now that we did not have in fifteen with Prop R and Prop A. Not to mention, we have people that know how to run these things. Not to mention, we have people that know how to run these things now in the community because we've done it. And Kevin and I would have to step aside, obviously, because we are on the board now. But Kevin, I believe, has a binder that, you know, that he passed on. So we do have people that are, we were literally the blind leading the blind when we did this. Am I right, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think we're in that position this time as far as communicating to people. But we are, you know, I'm back to, I agree with what you said, Lisa, about the community's image of the district right now being soured by COVID. But I, I think, you know, we could go hard, go big and it would, we could get the message out. I don't think that that's as big of a problem as we are making it, if that makes sense. With social media, I mean, social media has grown exponentially.
Social media is very difficult to communicate enthusiasm and energy, which is what we did with Prop R. The ability to interconnect with people, whether it was with the school board, the school board, whether it was the school meetings, whether it was standing out in front of Oakfield Elementary, doing strange and exotic and crazy things with people. So.
No, you're right.
What our strength is, but now we have a challenge with that strength.
Right. No kilts?
That's a chant. You've seen my legs. No, not in kilts.
That's one of the pages in the binder is kilts.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So we will move on to the next item, which is open period for patron comments for non-agenda items. And we do have Brittany Burchett signed up. And Brittany, just to go through a couple of things, when you are talking, you're talking to us, we won't respond. It's for you to tell us what it is you want to tell us. You've got three minutes. And the big rules are not going after individuals or specific situations that could get into trouble from a liability type aspect. So with that, the floor is yours.
Could you pull your speaker down? May I am?
Thank you very much for hearing us tonight. We really appreciate it. My husband Neil and I are both alumnis of the district and bought our house here so that our children can be a member of the public school district and have the same advantages that we did. A little about the learners in our household. We have a 14-year-old daughter. She's our biological daughter. She's a good student and she'll do fine with virtual learning. She greatly misses her friends, but she'll do fine with learning. Our nine-year-old and seven-year-old are adopted. They have ADHD, attachment disorders. They have IEPs for social and emotional support. Our son is frequently asked to leave daycare for his behavior, but he does wonderful with the structure at OES. They're both very attached to their social, their SSD teachers and their school counselor. Not being able to start school in the building is causing behavioral disturbances and difficulties in daycare, further distress of adults, reverting to poor coping strategies such as lying, stealing and running away. They're ineffectual virtual learners. They've been unable to focus to finish their, due to their medical diagnoses. They're physically unable to sit and learn in the material in front of the screen. You wouldn't dream of telling a child who needed a ramp to enter your building, you wouldn't build him one. We just heard that. My children need a ramp to their building right now. Just because you can't easily see their struggle doesn't mean that they're not struggling right now. They're very smart, but they're challenging learners. They are already at the minimum learning requirements for their grade. They're unable to retain virtual material thus far. You won't hold them back when they don't meet grade level expectations. Will you just push them along until they graduate? Will you set them up for failure as adults? This is a very short sighted plan. We come to you as a last resort. We know our learners. We know our families. We've attempted to bring in family from Florida. That will cost over $15,000. We've attempted private school and they've told us they cannot handle our needs. We commend you for getting Melville at home together so quickly. That was wonderful. Fantastic. People need it. People want it. People can do it. We can't. They were allowed the dignity to choose for their children. Please give us that same choice and dignity. I heard at the last meeting that you'd rather face an angry mob because you have their kids at home than because a child got sick or died. This is a very emotional and effective argument. However, no one is being forced to go to school. Their parents would all consent. So it's really not very valid. No one's suggesting we ignore the CDC or the Department of Health guidelines. No one is suggesting this isn't serious. It very much is. It's just not the only serious concern. We're both essential and our children are in daycare the whole time and they're very, very well physically. What are you waiting for? Like Tori said last time, is this virus is here and we need to be figuring out how to educate the students in this environment because that is the reality. Why are daycares and YMCA's and private schools safe? That doesn't remove the onus of responsibility of safety. It only shifted it away from you to us. So I guess my question is, my statement is, we really deserve more than to be reactive, listen to the rhetoric. We need to be proactive in doing what we need to do to get these kids in school because this is the lifetime we're talking about, not just listening. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Okay. Can we get a motion to enter closed session?
I'll make a motion. You adjourn.
I'll second.
Actually, it's enter in closed session, right?
Yeah, we have to.
You can run the language. I mean, it's got to be.
Right. You want me to do it?
Well, the authorization for closed session has the facility hearing committee unless I'm not refreshing properly. Yeah. Our Tori, do you want to go, Tori?
I don't have it in front of me.
Go ahead.
Sick 'em.
I think Lisa's got it. Go ahead. Can I get us?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And Tori cannot do.
Tori can't do it.
This vote. Okay. We are authorized for closed session, so temporarily adjourned.